I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott.
We'll say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Let we be blessed.
To the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Book call.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott.
Here.
Councilmember Marlin Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Publish your comment. I don't see that we have any comment cards. At this time, I'll ask you to please put your phones on vibrate. And we will move on to item two. Madam Clerk.
Acceptance of the minutes of November 2nd, 2021, which will publish on November 17th, 2021.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Markcott. Is there any discussion on our minutes from November 2nd? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, 3A.
Public hearing for special ordinance number 2021-2022-02, amending the budget to account for additional 1% general increase for all city employees. Amendment number one.
Do we have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlin Lewis and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. Is there anyone here to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Can we comment on it?
You can comment anytime you want. So, yes ma'am.
(laugh) Sorry. So, Kevin's not here today, is he?
Uh, he is gonna be here because he has some budget amendments.
Okay. Um, I just had a question because when I did the calculation, I just wanted to understand it because it was like, it came out to 1.5% on average. So, I'm just trying to figure out what's the discrepancy. Was it annualized? And I just don't have that information to make it that number.
Okay. Well, maybe we should get him before we move on. So, Jimmy, you mind getting him? Thank you.
(laugh) I'll get a minute.
Yo, yo, watch. His mind's gonna go.
I know.
I'm not gonna say a word.
(laugh)
Leave him alone.
He might be right. And Jeff, do we normally comment during public hearing or do we wait till we're going to adopt it? I already let it happen, but I'm just curious. Does it matter?
Well...
Because I can wait.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, we have to let the public talk.
Right. Right. I just wonder because, I mean, I could've waited and said we could do it under...
I don't know why, I don't know why the council can't talk.
That's what I thought. My public can, my council can too. Okay. Thank you. But amongst ourselves.
Right.
Good point, Ricky, right?
That is a good point, though.
Mm-hmm. That's why I asked. We'll put it this way, if it's ever the public, we won't comment, you know?
That's right.
Hi, Kevin.
Hello.
We are on our public hearing, but we're gonna allow some questioning now. This is on the 1% increase. And DeeDee had a question.
It seems like it averages out to like 1.5%. And I don't know if it's because it's annualized and there's probably more pay periods than what I'm covering. But I was just trying to figure out why there's a difference between the 1% and then the average of 1.5%.
I, unfortunately, I can't answer that question right now because I haven't looked at your calculations to see if there's a difference. And if there's a number you're looking at that maybe should not be included, I can look at it. But what we had done is we ran the, um... The 1%, we... It's all formula-based and everything was pointed at 1%.
Yeah, I just, it could be that it's annualized and, and that's how it comes out because there are more pay periods. I'm not sure. I was just asking because when I did the calculation, just straight, it came out to 1.5% on average.
Well, one of the things you have to consider is when you're doing the fire and the police, it might have been the situation. When you calculate a raise for the police and fire department, it's not just the salaries that you have to factor in the 1% on both of those units. You have to factor in their state supplemental pay they're receiving also.
Okay, that could very well be it.
And that's probably what's gonna happen is because you take, um... And they do get the 1% or the 2% raise on their supplemental pay as well.
Yes, so that's probably why it's coming out to 1.5.
Okay.
I apologize, I didn't have a quick answer. I had to kind of...
No, that's fine. I just wanted to understand. Okay, no problem. Just seeking to understand.
No problem.
Okay.
Cool. Anybody else have any questions before I move and close my public hearing? Thank you, Kevin.
I'll be back later.
Oh, good. And then, I need a motion to close our public hearing.
A motion.
We got a couple of them. Uh, motion by, uh, Councilman Marlin Lewis and a second by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas. Thank you all. Uh, Madam Clerk, 3B.
Public hearing on special ordinance number 2021-2022-03, amending the budget to account for donation of funds to be used at Acadian Ballpark. Amendment number two.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and a second by Councilman Broussard. Anybody here to comment on this item? Anybody at all? (laugh) Then I would ask for a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion. (laugh)
Councilman Broussard and, uh, I think Councilwoman Markcott was first on that. Thank you all very much. Uh, 3C, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing on ordinance number 2021-19, approving a lease contract between the City of New Iberia and Tesh Area Youth Baseball Association for use of Acadian Ballpark.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion, I'm gonna give this one to Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. Now, I'll give the second to Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there anybody here to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Moved.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. Thank you all. Uh, Madam Clerk, item 4A.
Special ordinance number...
Oh, wait, did I close the public hearing? I don't think...
You just closed C.
Yeah, you closed it.
You see, you closed C.
I closed it, okay.
That's right.
All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ford.
Special ordinance number 2021-2022-02, amending the budget to account for additional 1% general increase for all city employees. Amendment number one.
I need a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Broussard and a second by Councilman Lewis. Uh, is there any discussion on this item?
Yes, sir. Just a general comment.
Sure.
To make sure that the public is aware that, you know, by state statute, they got the 2%. By state statute, they got additional 1% because the Civic Civil Board asked us and requested, and the council went along with it, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so an additional 3% to our public employees this year, if, uh, just for consideration.
Yeah. Any other public comment or comment? Hearing seeing none, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. And I'm sure our employees thank you too. Uh, Madam Clerk, 4B.
Special ordinance number 2021-2022-03, amending the budget to account for donation of funds to be used at Acadian Ballpark. Amendment number two.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Markcott and a second by Councilman Swier. Any discussion?
It's an old ballpark.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure glad to see it still, still be alive, you know, and still doing something with it. It's a good time to really get it going. It's been there all my life. I think it's been there a long time. It's a pretty good place, so I hope we can use some other youth, can use it too, and make it active again. Appreciate it, Mr. Mason, what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
The, what was, what, $51,000?
$51,000.
$51,000. And then, so the changes or the money spent's gonna be brought before the council? Are you gonna recommend the changes moving forward? How, how we work on this, here?
I have no problem bringing it. I mean, I don't know how we worded that, if we had worded it that I could spend, but I don't think we did on that. So, I'll bring it back. I have no problem with that. All the money's gonna go to Acadian Ballpark.
Right, that's what you said.
That was an active donation, basically, what I agreed to with Mr. Wayne Landry. So, I'll bring it back and we'll have a good discussion about it.
Through Recreation Department, correct? That's what you said, right?
Yeah, that, that $51,000 will go through the Rec Department because the city owns it.
Okay.
So, that'll go through that. Taba is, as we talk about later, you know, the, the next item, they're taking on a lot of the expenses and all that. But this money, what we'll, what we're probably gonna use as far as there's some infrastructure there and some parts and pieces that maybe are missing or will be, that we're gonna have to replace. So, that, that money will go directly into the facility.
And, and the general public will go see, yeah.
The public will know what we're doing with the money. And I want, those donations are old. That baseball league has been shut down for a very long time, but people donated that are still around. I want them to know what we're doing with that money. So, I wanna bring it back. I'll bring everything, but, you know, that way the public can see and they can see.
And it shows we're doing something to the facility, I mean...
Does that get right?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, it looks like attached to that ordinance is Parks and Recreation, Acadian Ballpark, uh, revenues and expenditures. So, I think you got them both and you showed the expenditures, capital, outlay, equipment.
Okay. Good.
So, I think, I think it's in and out.
Okay.
So...
Yes, ma'am.
For this particular ballpark, even though the, um, the company that's gonna lease it has responsibility for kind of like general maintenance, will we still maintain like the... There's a major plumbing problem or the lights go out? Is that city, is that our responsibility?
We're hoping not. Uh...
It does not, it doesn't say that in a, it, it doesn't specify that they would be responsible for that in the contract. So, I'm just asking.
Hmm.
Doesn't say they maintain?
Yes.
It, it sounds like it's more general maintenance stuff. And so, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
The big lights go out, break, something?
Yeah.
Should we have some money set aside?
No.
Okay.
It's for them, right?
That's theirs.
Yeah, the way, the way it works in the contract, they're responsible.
Okay. That language isn't all that clear.
You say that like you don't believe it, uh...
No, I'm just saying it's, um, I mean, it, it sounds like to me, when I read it, if I interpret it as being more of the general maintenance stuff, not the big stuff. But, okay.
Well, we can, we can talk to Jeff wrote it, so...
Hold on just a minute, let's see.
Yeah, he's looking. Yeah, you know, and we could move to the next item. This is the money that we donated. Why don't we wait that, if you don't mind? Why don't we move that discussion to the next item? It's not like it's not coming.
Yeah.
Okay, so back on this one, this is to accept the money. Is there any other discussion on that? Then if there isn't, please vote your machines. Thank you. And now, we have $51,000 to go into the next item.
(laugh)
So, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, what are we on, 4C?
Ordinance 2021-19, approving a lease contract between the City of New Iberia and Tesh Area Youth Baseball Association for use of Acadian Ballpark.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Markcott, I believe, and, uh, Councilman Swier. So, now, we're on to discussion item. So, does anybody have anything they want to discuss? I think we do. So, I'll just call back on you to be the easiest way. I'll call back on Councilwoman DeeDee Reed and we'll continue our discussion.
Okay, I just, I was reading the responsibility of Taba and its subleases and I just, it didn't seem like it was clear to me. It may be clear to everybody but me.
Then let's ask our city attorney to give us an interpretation.
I think it's covered. Wearing care of the ball field is covered. Uh, cleanup, cleanliness is covered. Maintaining the school board license and other equipment is covered. Uh, facility in a safe and game-ready conditions covered. Shall be responsible for all field and building maintenance. Notwithstanding the foregoing Taba and its sublease, it's lessy shall be responsible to the city for ensuring that all improvements and grounds are properly maintained and returned to the city in good condition at the end of the term of this agreement. Yeah.
Okay.
Any further?
No, I mean, if he says it's covered, it's covered.
Okay, okay, and I believe him.
Me too.
Councilman Swier.
Yeah, it's on section five. But, uh, no, I had asked a question.
Yes, sir.
Last meeting when we voted that same question. If, were we responsible for the actual park?
Right.
And they're responsible for the maintenance of the actual field? Because this, I guess, it's two different...
The way we were looking at it, the ballpark and everything inside the ballpark is their responsibility.
Correct.
We do still have some responsibilities outside of that ballpark.
Right.
There's a tennis court, there's some grounds we have to keep up. I mean, we, we're not saying we're walking away from the whole park, but only the baseball.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else?
Sounds fair to me.
I think it is. And they're bringing in a semi-pro team and they have some money. And Taba has stepped up in the past. I feel very certain they will step up again. And the combination of that and freeing up that schedule, that's very important to me, that other schools could get involved and more kids could use this, that, that's my bottom line. That's what I was the most attracted to, was that it wouldn't cost us money at this time, that we're taking on other parks and other entities and really trying to expand what we do. So, we could kind of say, okay, you handled that. And with the new arrangement, I think more kids are gonna be able to funnel through there and use it, which that's worth, that's worth money just itself.
I think it's great.
Sir.
It's great that we have people that step up.
It is.
Big time.
It is.
Other towns would wish for this and hope somebody would step up and come help on their parks. And we wanna thank you all a lot for helping us. Please, and if it's you back there, return your personal...
Good point, Mr. Broussard.
I just have one last comment.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Reed.
So, termination, 365 days? That seems like, I mean, what if three months into it, we say, this isn't working? We gotta give them a whole year.
Well, we looked at the investment that they're gonna be making and the front-end money they're spending. Uh, I mean, I'm sure we could meet in a room and talk about it, but the, what we put in the contract was, we gave them a, a year out because Taba's already invested a lot of money. This new company that's coming in with Taba is gonna invest some money. Uh, you know, I mean, there's always legal remedies if something is really crazy, but, uh, we kind of wanted a, an exit strategy that was fair for both of us because they're putting, you know, they're gonna be putting money up right at the front end into it.
And they, they wanted a five-year deal.
Yeah.
And we came back with six months' termination.
Right, and six months, not a year.
And we agreed on a year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just because they have an organization they're bringing in that's gonna have the schedule, gonna have to do things. And if they, if they don't have some guaranteed period where they're gonna have it, they're gonna have a hard time attracting, attracting the kind of development they wanna do out there.
Right.
Okay.
So, they have a partner...
For their investment, they got some time.
We're trying to help them attract that partner to bring in more than we can do and they can do by themselves.
Okay.
So...
Anybody else?
And then, good.
Then I would ask you all to please vote your machines. Thank you all, and good discussion. Madam Clerk, 5A.
Resolution number 21-143, approving change order number one between the City of New Iberia, Glen Legay Construction LLC and Bayrod Habits and Associates for the South Lewis Street Improvement Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Move.
Our Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Broussard. Any discussion? John, you wanna come on up? Thank you. I'm just trying to break you in because, man, that road program's coming. I wanna see it. I wanna see it every meeting.
(laugh)
If the, if the council would allow me, I'd like to just make a little quick statement on this project.
Um... You are allowed.
We, we, we had a slight issue with traffic. I mean, uh...
(laugh)
Yeah, um, I'm not familiar, if you're not familiar with the project, but basically, we had one lane we had to shut down to try to keep traffic and construction. But that didn't work very well, uh, even though we had all the detours in place and the line, the signs. Uh, we had motorists that basically ignored all that and, you know, still came down the wrong way. And, uh, basically, 30 hours in, there was enough complaints to the Sheriff's Department that they basically recommended we just close the road down. And that sounds really easy to do, but that's very difficult to do on the fly. So, uh, in a span of about three hours, between talking with the mayor and the police department, the contractor and, uh, other entities within the city, we basically got everybody together, had a meeting, and got everybody in place to change our plan and shut the road down. So, with that, I, I wanna publicly thank the mayor, for one, for helping facilitate that, you know?
It had to happen.
It, it, it took, it took a lot to get that done, but not just the mayor, but the, uh, uh, Chief of Police, uh, Mr. Delaubert, uh, the Assistant Chief who met with us on site, Mr. Williams, Joe Livingston, who basically had to, he had to basically come in and do some work on his end. He got his crew to come in. Uh, he also got with the, uh, local DOTD because we, you know, as a city, you can't shut down a state road, you know, but he got them to come in within a two-hour timeframe, which is almost an impossibility. Uh, and they shut down Admiral Doyle, a portion of Admiral Doyle needed to be shut down. Uh, and, and I said, all that was done in a three-hour timeframe, so... And also, thanks for the Sheriff's Department because they did extend us some help, you know, outside the city limits to try to curtail some of this, what they could. So, with all that being said, we, once we got it closed down, it went a lot smoother. And I wanna thank the contractor, Glen Legay, because, you know, he changed his work schedule from a 14-day work schedule to basically a five-day work schedule and got the job done. Uh, and the superintendent, Neil Abear, was critical in that. You know, he, he did a tremendous job getting this done. He had to reschedule all the work, you know, and pull crews from another job. So, you know, uh, he wanted to get it done just to try to alleviate the problem. So, I just wanna publicly thank everybody because it, it was a, it was a stressful, uh, five hours, trying to get that taken care of, uh, but it, it was, it was not a good situation. The motorists were basically putting themselves in danger, other motorists in danger, and our construction crew in danger. So, it was just something that had to be done.
You can reach back and patch yourself because thank you for your efforts. I mean, we were on the phone three or four times.
Yeah.
Working, and you were between all the parties, so thanks for what y'all did.
Yeah, that's what we're here for. So, on this change order, um, and I wanna, basically, this is kind of like a, a primed-up pump because this is what's gonna happen on our future projects. We're gonna come to you with these change orders. They're called administrative change orders. So, basically, these projects work where basically we estimate quantities, those contractors bid against those quantities, and then they go install the work. Now, those quantities can fluctuate. Sometimes they go over, sometimes they come under. In this particular case, we have, uh, four line items that are all described with, and this was all on the bid form. Uh, you know, we had one line item that went over and we had three that came under budget. So, when it all boils down to it, you're not really getting a refund because you haven't paid the contractor in full yet, but you're lessening his contract.
Right.
So, you're gonna pay him less at the, you know, one, in all. So, this is a deductive change order for $4,407.20. And, you know, the backup paperwork, it kind of, it just breaks down. It just gives you basically what was used, what was spent, and it's basically just a balancing tool. So, but when we start the big projects, we're gonna come to you with these relatively often because we wanna, as we finish out streets and complete things, because it's a long project. It's not like it's a one-street project, it's a lot of streets. We wanna balance those books as we go along. That way, we keep a tight control of the money. So, for this project here, you know, it came in under budget, the $4,407.20.
Good.
So, that's what I need you guys to approve, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Is it normal for you to maybe cut the timeframe in half like they did for this project on streets?
This was a special circumstance. I mean, this was like a, I mean...
Or you just hurried up because of the traffic situation?
It was basically the situation dictated. I mean, they scheduled it out because they have other work. I mean, he, he basically shut a project down to four people.
Okay, gotcha.
To get this done in a four-day, five-day timeframe.
Okay.
So, it, that was, that's not a normal thing, but, I mean, he was, he was willing to work with us and get it done because he just, he wanted it finished, honestly. It was, it was, it wasn't a nice situation with the traffic. So, we learned a lot, what we're gonna have to do on the next projects with motorists. We're just gonna shut roads down.
We're just gonna shut roads down.
(laugh) So...
Yeah.
Thank you.
We try to, we try to be...
I know.
You know, but it just doesn't work sometimes.
No, sir.
The big trucks.
Yes, sir. Mr. Broussard.
The big trucks. They didn't know what to do.
Yeah.
That was a big villain you had was when they let it open from Weeks Island Road. They needed to shut it down because they were packing up all kind of, we had three or four stuck.
Yeah.
But thank you, sir. I think you did it real fast. A blink of an eye, it was done. So, we thank you all for getting that done.
You're welcome.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it. Any other comments? No? Okay, well, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, 5B.
Resolution number 21-144, accepting a certificate of substantial completion from Glen Legay Construction LLC, Bayrod Habits Associates for the South Lewis Street Improvement Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed and a second, was it, Mr. You, Mr. Broussard? Mr. Broussard. Any discussion?
Thank you again.
Yes, sir, Mr. Broussard?
Thank you again.
All right. Uh, here and seeing none, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Madam Clerk, five C.
Resolution number one forty-five, approving change order number one between the City of New Iberia, Menville Lumber Company, and Paul Allen for the visitors' pavilion conversion project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Reed. Paul, see Paul's here. Uh, Paul, you want to give us an explanation? Tell us what's going on?
And update.
Sir?
And update.
And update, sure. Uh, this is the pavilion building in Bullany Plaza. Um, the demolition on the project is, uh, basically completed for all the work that was required to be done. The original architect designed a bathroom, a large set of bathrooms for the building. There were a lot of masonry walls that were impacted, and those masonry walls had to be taken down. Um, in some of our evaluation of the original building, some of the drawings we looked at had a little bit different information than what we found on the job site and was uncovered on the job site. Uh, there were metal panels, so we kind of had limited visibility to be able to see into the walls. And so, what we're talking about are, there are some, uh, fin walls, or we call them structural walls, which kind of recess into the building. There's a total of four of them, and they line up from the parking lot side. On the front side of the walls, they're encased and the brick comes all the way down. On the back side of the walls, there was brick and, and, uh, concrete block which was removed, and when it was removed, the cavity of the back of the wall got exposed, and we can't have it exposed because, um, it's a structural wall and, um, and, uh, it needs to be sealed off for, for structural reasons, and aesthetically, it looks horrible. So, uh, the contractor has painstakingly saved all the brick that's available to do this work, all the old Chicago, so we're not buying brick. It's just a, it's just the, the correction, and plus, he's also stitching in the brick, which means he's not just cutting them straight, he's pulling every other brick out. So, at the end of the day, it looks like a brand new column, and we think that's a very important detail. Um, the project, unfortunately, we think this is one and only change order to occur on the project. We're that far along, uh, because we're past all those issues, and, uh, and we were, we were under budget on the project, so this is going to eat a little bit into the budget. We're twenty-seven thousand under budget, so this change order brings us to twenty-three thousand dollars approximately under budget. So...
There's thirty-eight hundred dollars and some change up there.
Yes, thirty-eight hundred dollars. So, um, just think it's an important part. It is, is this tourist building. People are going to see it. They're going to touch it, and, and that's kind of an important detail. So, that's what this is all about. And I, I think I gave a, I tried to give you a very detailed explanation.
You did.
Okay?
Good, yeah. Okay, anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Do we have like a, a picture of what it's going to look like? I feel like I've never seen it.
Um, I think we have a rendition, don't we?
Yeah, we do have a render. Basically, what you look at now, that you see the arches all open is, is what you're going to see. They'll be in the facility, there's a pair of wrought iron gates we're reusing that would, that used to be the entry of the bathroom, and there's a pair of doors we're going to reuse as a closet along the wall. But when you ride by, we want, you'll see all the displays on the inside when we get to that point, but that open pavilion look that it has now is pretty much what the outside's going to look like.
Okay.
Uh, which is, you know, I think it's neat. It looks, it looks much bigger than it did when it was a bathroom.
Yeah.
And, uh, we've been thinking of future uses because if you take some police barricades and barricade this side, which is not a very long run, barricade that side and handle two sets of steps at the steamboat pavilion, you now could make that entry and do ticketed events. So, we could get a band, we could charge, we could have a fundraiser. You can, it, it's, now that it's open, you really start seeing how it's the gateway to get to the whole plaza area, but that's basically what it's going to look like.
Okay, and it's always going to be open?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's going to be open air. We're building everything that we can anchor it. We're trying to come up with a way that we can remove it if we want to, but let's say, not anchor, let's say lock it down, because at times, we might want to roll out all of those kiosks. Um, not the things that are bolted on the wall, but the movable kiosks in the middle that we're planning on putting so that it can be kind of multi-use at times. But we want it to be open air. We want it to be open. Uh, it's open very much. It will be lighted well so that, you know, we can see in to see if anything, anybody's doing something they shouldn't be, but it will be open.
I mean, will it ever be locked, like at night?
No.
Okay.
No, it's an open air thing, and, uh, it will remain that way. We don't want to have to staff it. Everything we put in is going to be, uh, weatherproof so that, you know, like you see kiosks along Main Street or in other areas that are outside. I mean, we're going to build it and design it so that everything can withstand the elements.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Anybody else? Nice.
Yeah.
It's going to be, well, it's going to tell our story. And what it's going to do is send people, because we're going to do some funky stuff. If I want you to, you know, just think about it, when does, when do we send people to Conrico on Ann Street? When do we send people to Anointed Soul Food? When do we send people to Bon Creole? You know, those kind of, all those little gyms that we have, the cool thing is we're going to take one wall and kind of say, eat here, shop here, you know, those kind of things, and try to send people all over town. So, I think besides telling our history, you know, we're going to be able to kind of really customize it for our community and do some fun stuff with it, you know. Well, if there's nothing further, please vote your machines. Thank you. Dee Dee, you got a change order. Remember you told me that twenty-seven thousand hundred is going to be a change order? Well...
Yep.
You must have saw on that wall.
I was right.
You must have saw on that wall. All right, five D.
Resolution number one forty-six, awarding contract to plan at recess for the District One Santiago Park Improvements Project.
Before I do this, these next three are all from the hundred thousand dollars that council people were given to spend in their districts, and we've worked on that, but I just want people to know where the money's coming from. It's coming from your council person. I'm sorry. Uh, I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Markott and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Reed. Is there any discussion?
So...
I guess a comment.
Yeah, oh, sure.
You can go first. You already started talking.
Okay.
Just from a financial perspective, or is it, uh, are they allocating a certain amount for each council member? Can, like, say Santiago, obviously, that's your, that's your district, or what are you allocating to that project?
Well, everyone expressed to me in that general area that they wanted more park equipment. So, I knew that it was going to be expensive. I didn't really allocate a certain amount. I just wanted to see what we can get for the price. It is very expensive. It is basically eighty thousand dollars for park equipment. So, um, I am left over a little bit more, but, um, we'll see what comes up, where I can put that money towards in the future. But, uh, we were able to get two different sets and a merry-go-round, and I guess that's the mulching too, right?
Yes.
And a border.
She funded a hundred percent of that project?
Yes.
Okay. I thought there was...
Which is awesome.
No, that's awesome. I agree.
Oh, no, no. We got, there's so, I, I just, you know, we're not going to review them all tonight, but there's so many good projects coming, and people have partnered, or then they've gone off and said, I'm going to do the, you know, it's, it's, it's fun.
No, I think it's good stuff.
I asked for opinions, actually, and they wanted specific things. That's why whenever they first sent the order to me, I was like, wait, it's missing something. They wanted a, a rock wall, so we had to send it back and make sure we had the rock wall. Um, they wanted slides and a merry-go-round, so all that is included in this park equipment right here. So, I think everyone's going to be happy, I hope.
Well, you made every effort. I mean, you've worked hard on this and, you know, it's good.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Any other comments? Then, uh, please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you. Our next item for E, we're going to bring that one back at the next meeting. That's one that we're doing a little bit more work on and making a little change, so we're going to bring that one to the next meeting, uh, with that park equipment. That's Mr. Broussard. And I couldn't scratch it from the agenda because we're within twenty-four hours, so all I can do is say, we'll put it on the next agenda. So, we'll move on to five F.
Resolution number one forty-eight, awarding contract to plan at recess for District Five East First Street Park Improvements Project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Dee Dee Reed, second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Uh, is there any discussion?
No, I, I just think that this is going to be a great addition to the park, the East First Street Park. The kids in that area are getting a little older, and so they needed something, a little, that's probably not made just for like, you know, little kids, two to four, and so I think they're going to be excited about this. I think they're going to really enjoy it. So, I'm excited that we could do this for them.
Good, good. Anybody else? Then, uh, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Wait.
Are y'all trying?
Please vote your machines. That was from last time?
Yep.
Oh, that'd make the meeting go quick. No, I'm picking. Now, we go on to item six A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty, authorizing the City of New Iberia, Louisiana, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with respect to economic development district projects with the City of New Iberia Economic Development District Number Three, and taking other matters in connection therewith, and to set for public hearing on December seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Markott and a second by Councilwoman Broussard. Uh, we have Jason Akers here as well. Uh, is there any discussion on this one? This is to allow us to have our pass through, that the money, uh, is bonded out, comes to the city, goes to the EDD, or vice versa. You know, I mean, that's how we doing this. But does anybody have any discussion on it? Nope? Okay, then I would ask you to please, uh, vote your machines. Thank you. Now, we go to seven A. Kevin, come on up.
See, I told you I'll be back. Hey, you laughed.
That's it.
All right, so, uh, are y'all okay if we, I guess the first thing is, do we need to go over September, or do y'all just want to ask questions and then we'll go over October? Since we're doing two months tonight.
Uh, I guess you should give us the highlights.
For September?
Yeah, you know, ma, I hate to skip completely.
So, for the month of September, general fund is at, um, revenue is at ninety-two point thirty-three percent of budget. Um, after eleven months, it should be at ninety-two. So, we are where we need to be on the general fund. On the revenue expenditures are at eighty-one point oh-three, so we are, um, did not spend the money that we had budgeted due to, you know, just timing and some of the things put on hold for weather, or projects just had not been able to get to. But those projects have all been carried over to next year.
Yep.
So, yeah, so everything that's project related goes over, right, to the next? Okay, so do you, when you say that, do you mean like, let's say, look at the first legislative. Um, the actual is a hundred and eight thousand, seven forty. Two hundred and eleven thousand was budgeted. So, does that forty-nine percent go over into the budget or just the project money?
No, in that case, the reason why legislature did not spend everything, the biggest part of that was the, um, the screen. We actually came in like thirteen thousand dollars under budget on that, so that has to be factored in. So, you get fifty-one, you need to sell forty-one percent, thirteen percent of that. That's about, um, probably about five percent of it there. I don't have all of them. If that's, y'all want to know all that, we can, I can start providing that, but I don't have the exact information in front of me.
No, I just, I'm just trying to understand more from a general standpoint, not any specific account.
So, if this is a project that is in process, and we didn't get to the percentage completion that we were forecasting, then the remainder part of that ongoing project would be carried over?
Okay.
If it's not, and it's done, then that money is considered as going back into the general fund where we did the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, the answer is, every savings doesn't get rolled over. In other words, and I know that's where you were heading.
Yeah.
Uh, sometimes it'd be fun if it did, but sometimes I'm glad it doesn't.
Right.
So, depending on the department, but anything that's a project, even if it's sometimes one we hadn't started because of timing or whatever, we roll that over because y'all have approved that. It's something we want to do.
Right.
Uh, if it's halfway through, well, of course, we roll it over, but anytime that it's a savings, for the most part, it, it goes back to the general fund.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
So, Kevin, just for instance, Public Works, it's sixty-four point two-four percent. Is there some major expenditures in the next thirty days that we're expecting, or they're just, just running a pretty tight ship?
I wasn't there, Ricky.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Do you want to do that? I, I have no problem. Just pick it on you, Ricky. The biggest thing for Public Works is we had budgeted for a, uh, new tractor, seventy-something thousand dollar, and, um, that, all we did was requisition. We haven't received the tractor, and even though we're in the new fiscal year, we're still waiting on it. So, that is part of the, um, outstanding.
That we carry that, carry, you know, and if we don't, if it's, like I said, if it's something that we plan to do, a piece of equipment or a project, we're going to carry that over. And there are times that, you know, we hurried up, Joe is a new department head, but he's been, he's caught on his money pretty quick, but he's been pretty cautious. So, he waited and waited and said, let's just make sure the year goes good, and then I'll pop up my tractor at the end, and that's what he did. So, that money will get carried over to help us pay for the tractor.
So, um, before we, a lot of these variances that you're seeing here, a lot of them are going to go away in the fi...
In the next month.
In the next month, because we've done the five percent. We've moved some of the money out that we can see we're not going to spend, and we've made adjustments in the next month.
Okay.
Okay.
So, basically, for September, we're pretty much in line with everything.
I, revenue wise, we're online. Um, I have to, I hate to do this, but I will apply to waste water fund and vents, because they're actually a hundred and ten, and that's mainly, part of that is due to, um, inside joke. Uh, the sewer fees were higher than what we had, uh, forecasted or budgeted. So, we did well on that.
Okay.
Any other questions on, um, September?
No, and like you say, we, it's really going to show when we do October.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you ready to go to October?
Yeah, let's move to October, and now we'll go over the whole thing.
All right, so we should at this point be a hundred percent. Do we want to go in total, or do y'all want to go line by line?
I say go line by line because somebody might have a discussion on it.
Okay.
Might spur so.
So, let's start with legislative. We received twenty-five dollars. We were not expecting it. Generally, y'all do not receive fund. It happened when we received this, and it was put there. So, you're actually exceeding your budget on expenses. It was budgeted one thirty-five. Y'all came in at one eighteen, so basically, you're coming at eighty-seven point five percent of your budget. On the five percent, just, um, going back on that, what I do is I look at the, for the most part, um, overall. So, my expenses cannot be more than five percent of what's budgeted. My revenue should not be more than, um, five percent of what's, I have to be within five percent of the, um, revenue, and I can't go over expenses by five percent.
Okay.
So, City Marshal, budget four, we came in at two point three. So, you have fifty-seven four, point four-two percent of the revenue. On the expense side, it was sixty-two thousand. We came at fifty-six, so you're at ninety-one percent of the budget for the marshal. City Court, budget thirty-four. We came in at thirty-four, so we came in at a hundred and two percent of revenue. Expenses, four sixty-eight. We came in at four sixty-five, leaving us at ninety-nine percent. Legal, budget forty-one. We came in at forty-seven, so we're at a hundred and fourteen, a hundred and fifteen percent. It was hard for us to, um, project the numbers that were coming in because it just depends on the case flow.
Okay.
Uh, expenses, budget one seventy-four. We came in at a hundred and fifty, so we're at eighty-seven percent of the budgeted expense.
Thank you, Jeff.
So, quick question.
That's, um, Nicole.
Oh, that's Nicole. Ah, okay.
So, I have a quick question about process.
About what?
Process.
The process?
Yes. So, in this case, it, the actual ended up being a hundred and fifty. So, would you ever go back and look at twenty-twenty-two to see if that budgeted number is too high because you were so low here?
Am I, is my one seventy-four high? Well...
No, I'm...
Yes, we do, we do look at, when we do the budgets.
We do the last three years.
We look at the last three years.
Okay.
So, we based it upon the last three years. A lot of the expenses, we were kind of, this is the first full year for the, um, pre-trial diversion or the, um, what's the program she calls it? Pre-trial diversion, huh?
Yeah, pre-trial diversion.
So, we weren't sure of those expenses. Um, and it was kind of new for Nicole and some of her expenditures also. I think this is her second year.
Yeah, okay. Again, I wasn't, I'm not just, I just use that as an example. I'm not talking about any particular account. I'm just trying to understand process.
Yeah, but we do go back three years and kind of look and, you know, we try to talk about it, communicate if we think we have something coming that's going to be, you know, out of the ordinary.
Right.
But, uh, we do try to do that because, you know, it'd be very easy to just make everything really high and say, I'm always under budget. I mean, that's not, that's not what we doing, but, uh, we do do some comparisons.
And we also, we pretty much scrutinize, well, more than some department heads like, there are some questions that we will ask them on their expenditures. They don't have a free-for-all on their money. There are some checks and balances put in to match against the budget.
Okay.
Administration, budget sixty-three. We came in at sixty-four in revenue, so we're a hundred and one percent. Expenses, one point oh-three. We came in at eight hundred and fifty-six, so expenses, we're at eighty-two point seventy-three. City Hall occupancy, we budgeted four oh-nine. We came in at two sixty-one, so we're at sixty-four percent, and that's, um, just saying, like, what we were talking about on the previous month. We had projects that we were hoping to get done by the end of the fiscal year, and we had, um, put that into consideration, but just timing and, um, the bid process. Is that correct, Craig?
Pretty much, pretty much.
Cliff Oakwell, we budgeted six, three hundred and sixty-one. We came in at three forty-one, so we're at ninety-five percent of the budget. Insurance, we budgeted two seventy-five. Actual was two twenty-two, so we came in at eighty-one percent. Finance, we budgeted four million. We came in at four point one, so we're at a hundred and one point nine eight percent. Expenses, seven hundred and forty-nine. We came in at seven forty, so we're at ninety-eight point eighty-eight percent. Municipal civil service, one hundred, um, let's say one oh-one thousand. We came in at ninety-three, so we're at ninety-two point fourteen percent. Police and fire civil service, we budgeted two point nine. We came in at two point two. We're at seventy-five point eighty-three, which is kind of misleading because we're only off seven hundred dollars, and that is, we hold on because we want to make sure they have enough of supplies, and that's Ms. Mabel, and she generally waits until the end of the year.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's misleading just because the numbers are so small.
Yes, it's a small number.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning, six oh-seven. Came in at six oh-seven, so a hundred percent of their revenue. Expenses, nine ninety-five. Came in at nine seventy-six. They're ninety-eight percent of their budget. Nonprofit allocations, seventeen. We came in at fifteen. We're eighty-nine point two-two percent. Tesh Museum, budgeted five thousand. We didn't spend anything, and so we're at zero percent. And we set...
Shh.
And we set...
I'm just kidding. My phone's going to ring.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Police Department, eight point one. Came in at eight point one, so they're a hundred percent of their revenue. Expenses, uh, eight million. Came in at seven point one, so they're at eighty-nine point five-three percent.
Part of that is because the jail wasn't taking misdemeanors, so we would have actually maybe been, you know, right at the line, but we got a little break because many people got summonses because of COVID.
Right.
Fire Department, five point one. They came in at five point two in revenue, so they're at a hundred and three percent of their revenue. Expenses, six point one. We came in at a five point nine, so they're at ninety percent of their expenses. Inspections, permits, and compliance, one seventy-nine. They came in at two forty. Uh, so they're a hundred and thirty-four percent. The reason that happened is it's hard for, for us to know when somebody's going to come in and actually pay for, um, expenses that we have put towards for demolition that, or, um, costs in the back, in the rear, when they're going to come in and pay it, and we just, we got a little...
Okay.
...that's like at the end of the year. Expenses, two eighty-seven. They came in at two fifty-nine, so they're at ninety percent of their expenses. Demolition, eleven thousand. They came in at twelve, so they're a hundred and eight. That's an example of demolition. We don't know who's going to come in and pay those. Uh, expenses, sixty-nine point seven. Came in at sixty-six point eight, so they're at ninety-six percent. Slime Theater, revenue of seven hundred. Actual was fifteen hundred. Came in at two hundred and fourteen. It's, again, misleading because it's only seven hundred, uh, eight hundred dollars. dollars. And that was an event that I didn't factor in when I was doing the projections, I mean, the adjustments. Slime, expenses, twelve point two, they came in at eleven point three. And then transfers, that is simply what we're transferring out of general funds to the others, so that one's naturally going to be a hundred percent revenue and a hundred percent of the expenses. Parks and Recreation, revenue was one million, they came in at one point one, so they're at a hundred and eleven point eight on their revenue. Expenses was one million two. Budget, actual was one point one, so they're at ninety-three point eight or ninety-four percent. Public Works, two point eight, budget, actual was two point eight, so they're a hundred and one percent. Expenses, two point eight, they came in at two point three, so they're eighty-three point four-two. That was, um, a project that we were anticipating finishing that we didn't. Sales tax fund, the revenue was eight point nine, we actually finished the year with nine point eight. We had a better last month than what I was anticipating. Then the expenses, two point three, budget, actual was two point two, so we're at ninety-nine point eighty-five percent. Public Safety, which is the police and fire safety, um, sales tax, three point seven, we came in at three point seven on revenue, so it's a hundred percent. Expenses, three point eight, um, actual is three point seven, so we're at ninety-nine point eight-three. Garbage, one, four point two, budget, actual is five, four point three, so we're a hundred point two-three on revenue, and that's the sales tax collection. Expenses, budgeted are four point three, we came in at four point three, so you're at ninety-nine point eighty-one percent. And Section Eight vouchers, budget revenue, one point four, came in at one point four, so they're a hundred and two point five-seven percent of their revenue. Expenses, budgeted one point five, came in at one point four, so they're ninety-four point four percent. You had a question, Mr. Ricky?
No.
Oh, okay. Waste Water, budgeted revenue of four point eight, they came in at five point four, so they're a hundred and ten point eight-one percent. Expenses are five point six, budget expenses, actuals were four point six, so they're at eighty-two percent of their expenses. Any questions?
Questions or comments? And as you see, we always try to be a little low on our revenue and be a little, you know, just to have that little bit of cushion, I don't want to over, get too bold and say, oh, yeah, we're going to, you know, more money's coming in. So we try to stick to, you know, and we'll continue to run it as tight as we can, as we have, but, uh, you know, I'll caution us that in this year coming, we're spending more money than we, between the ARPA, between the grants that are hitting, between new projects from small little parks and all kind of stuff we have planned, we, we are spending more money this coming year, the, the road bond, but taking this conservative approach is what got us the good rating for the bond, which is what got us, you know, to where we could borrow the twelve point five million, you know?
I would anticipate our next year budget looks not, is quite similar than this one.
I agree. I agree, I think between all of the, you know, let's be realistic, between the grant matches, between the in-house projects, between everything we're doing, you know, our momentum is back, that, you know, COVID really slowed us down. Our momentum is back, that we're moving and more things are happening, and we're all spending money in districts and everywhere, which we need to do. I mean, we're not a bank, we're a service business. So I think that we won't look, this is probably the strongest we're going to look, uh, our taxes, we've been very blessed that people are buying local and that we have new things for them to buy, so our taxes are up and I am, you know, hoping and praying that that continues, we have other new stores that are opening, a couple of other ones that are inquiring, so I think, uh, you know, we're on a good path, but it's due to a lot of hard work between the administration, between all the department heads, the departments, and you as a council that is helping us, you know, go down this road. I mean, it's a, it's a big old team effort.
I think you make a good point about the fact that we, this is kind of anomaly this year, so as we look at budget for the following year, twenty-twenty-three, we need to take that into consideration, that this was an anomaly year, just so that, when, because you say you look three years back, that could skew the numbers.
Uh-huh, I agree, I agree. Now, if our taxes stay up and, you know, the revenue's still good.
That would be great.
Then we can use this year as a model. If we start seeing halfway through the year, four months, five months in, you're exactly right, we're going to have to say, okay, you know, let's back off a little bit.
Well, I want to just kind of clarify, this is the budget, this is what we're anticipating and bringing in versus what we're actually bringing in or what we're budgeting to spend. So this is how we control what we're going to contribute to the fund balance at the end of the year.
Right, right.
So the budget might not be pretty, but yet what we do for the year could be better.
I understand.
So this is the governing tool to keep us in that line.
This is our control factor.
Yes.
Right. No, I'm just saying that, you know, when you look at a budget, especially when you're looking backwards, if you have an anomaly year, you have to take that into consideration. Now, it might be anomaly year for many different reasons, so.
Uh-huh, no, I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
You know, on the flip side, we're, we're building good reserves.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm telling you, next year, at the end of the year, I'm coming with a, with a, we got to do something for a permanent road program, and I have some concepts to do that.
That would be great.
To get us out of this, but we are going to take some of our reserves and, and put it up front.
Yeah.
You know, to be able to fund that. So it's, it's good we're building it up, but I'm only by to think we're a bank, you know? There is a plan there and we will be coming, but, you know, we can only do that because the previous council and this council got it and have worked as a team and really see money and really understand that we, there's a bigger picture, we're trying to, to change this community and to do that and to make the improvements we need to make, we got to have these control factors and, and tight budgets.
Right.
You know? Anybody else? Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we go to councilman's remarks, Dustin.
Uh, just have a couple. Um, I've been getting a few phone calls about if their road's going to be paved and they're starting to see all the markings, and I believe they're going out and do maybe some geological surveys.
They are.
So if they do, people do see that, I mean, possibly that is a determination that your road will eventually be done.
Ha.
It's not going to, it's not starting tomorrow, it's not starting January one, but, uh, if they do have any, if anybody has any questions from my district, just reach out and call me. Um, another one, I want everyone to have a happy Thanksgiving. Uh, we don't see each other again until December, so.
Yep.
Um, wish you all a happy Thanksgiving to you and your family, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanted to make a few announcements. First, if you haven't had an opportunity to ride down Hopkins Street, please do, as a matter of fact, why don't you go at night? You'll see how beautiful the decorations, the Christmas decorations look on Hopkins Street. I mean, we're just so excited and we want to thank the Hopkins Street Economic Development Group for purchasing these, um, decorations, it looks beautiful. And we're going to put the Christmas tree up there again, um, probably later this weekend, and so it's going to even look even nicer, so, and we're going to ask some of the businesses to kind of put up lights to light it up even more, but everybody should ride down Hopkins Street after it gets dark and see how beautiful it looks. Um, second thing is, um, we have a Hopkins Street cleanup, District Two, District Five cleanup this weekend. On Saturday, we're going to start at nine, but we're going to meet at eight forty-five, uh, where the Obunk Johnson, uh, park used to be, you'll see a big dumpster out there, and then Marlon and I will be out there. And, uh, so anybody who wants to kind of help us come, you know, clean up that area, we would really appreciate it, as many volunteers as possible are welcome to come. If you've got some young people that need volunteer hours, send them our way. Um, and then the, there is a COVID vaccination event tomorrow at St. Edward's Church, I believe it starts at eleven AM, so it's kids from the age of five on up, so if you have a child that needs to be vaccinated, you can walk in, there's no pre-registration. That's it. Oh, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Libby.
Uh, the Iberia African American Historical Society invites the community, um, in commemorating Howe Institute, uh, which was one of the early Iberia Parish Schools for Blacks and Booker T. Washington Historic Visit. And it's going to be Saturday also, November the twentieth, uh, from ten o'clock AM to two-thirty PM. It's going to be at St. Paul Congregational Church, which is at one thirty-one Persian Street here in New Iberia, it's free to the public. Uh, the symposium includes, uh, guest speakers, art, music, lunch, and unveiling of the Howe Institute Louisiana Historical Marker, uh, located at the Iberia Parish Courthouse. So come on out if you are very much interested, come to the event free of charge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ricky?
All right, so, um, first of all, you know, I don't get to get off every, in this time of the year, so I've been working pretty late, but I got a chance to get off early Saturday, went downtown, went to see the new play, Nonsense, saw the marquee that we did on that, that S D was done, very nice, well-done play, the marquee looks great down in Little Street, had a chance to round out Hopkins Street, very nicely done, spells Main Street, and, uh, the, um, market walk was really well-attended, thought it was really done well, and, uh, obviously the weather cooperated. Also, a big event coming December, the seventh Food Net for Families, uh, if you guys can contribute food to the, uh, the hungry, it's a very successful program, it fills our local pantries, and it's essential to, to the community of people that can't afford, especially with inflation going on. So I would encourage you guys to go out and bring out some canned goods and things to help the families in need.
So, thank you.
And it's all day, it starts at eight AM, it's all day.
Mr. B.
Let's, uh, let's enjoy our Thanksgiving, a few families can get together now, and it's very much holy time. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, I rode up and down Main Street today, I noticed the Christmas lights on the poles.
Yes, sir.
I didn't get down Hopkins yet, but I was surprised.
Yeah.
It's looking good. The main thing everybody can do only and mostly on a small election like we have, go vote, it makes a difference. Please, whatever the date is for the runoff, it's a small election, but people, go exercise your right to vote, if you don't mind, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Mayor, um, Councilwoman Deedee Johnson basically shared all that we have going on this weekend, uh, but, uh, I think on a Thanksgiving Day, there's going to be a massive, um, community feeding, um, and I think they're going to be doing, Heather, I'm sure, because they're using the parks.
Four locations.
I think it's four, four locations on Thanksgiving Day, and I know the Weston Park is one.
Bank Street.
Bank Street Park is one.
Does he go downtown?
On the corner of, uh, uh, well, at Slime, I mean, not Slime, at Bullany Plaza.
Bullany Plaza is one.
On the corner of Hopkins and Robertson.
Yeah.
And on the corner of Hopkins and Robertson, there'll be four feedings for, uh, Thanksgiving, and that's on Thanksgiving Day, huh?
Right.
And it's sponsored by, I think it's sponsored by somewhat of the Iberia Ministerial Federation, I know WACNA is involved as well, uh, so that's going on, um, and again, um, come join us this weekend for the neighborhood cleanup on Hopkins Street, uh, help us clean up, you know what I'm saying? Uh, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody, you know, their families, be safe, and, uh, happy Thanksgiving to y'all, too.
Appreciate it. Brooke?
I just want to pass along a message from Republic to my constituents, um, apparently the trash cans have been overfilled and so they're not, they're not dumping them whenever they're too full. Uh, also, if they're too close to a mailbox or another bin, the claw can't fit around it, I got probably five reported to me today, just in my district, but over the last three weeks, I've been getting several of them. So I just want to remind people, don't overfill your trash, you can call Republic in, buy you another bin if you need a second one, um, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
I just have a few. Uh, I need to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Henry Pell J worked for the city for forty-five years, and he passed away, uh, about a month ago, I guess, three weeks ago, so I just wanted to acknowledge his service to the city. He also used to work for my dad on the weekends, and so when I was about, uh, twelve, thirteen, I know I couldn't drive, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I worked with him on the weekends because he had a really cool old truck, so I was always trying to buy his truck, but a really nice man, and I just wanted to acknowledge his, you know, that he had passed and that he had worked forty-five years for the city, that's quite the accomplishment. Um, our next meeting is going to be December the seventh, uh, we ask you to please look at those surveys on MS4 on our website, we still have properties for sale on Civic Source, and I, like everyone else, am excited about Thanksgiving and, you know, wish all of you and your families, you know, a happy Thanksgiving, same to our community, be safe, and, uh, I'm looking, we have a meeting, don't go anywhere, but I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Well, before, oh.
Thank you.
Because Sheila Delahoussier also passed away, I heard she was a nine-one-one operator for many, many years.
Oh, yes, she worked for the PD.
Yeah, she died, her funeral was last Saturday.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And it is nice, too, I've asked Sandra to kind of, I, I'll admit that I got a lot going on and it's hard to keep up, and some people, I wasn't here when they worked here, but I have kind of asked Sandra, she's kind of, to kind of keep track of that and when she sees something that we can, and these, again, these are business meetings, but at this announcement time, it's good to kind of acknowledge people and, and their service to our community, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Cool. Well, we're done on that one?